I call to order this meeting of the Warren County School Board for Wednesday, September 15, 2021. The first item on the agenda is to accept or modify the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to accept the agenda as presented to us.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Again, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to us and reviewed by each member.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Action agenda. Increase the substitute rates for the 21-22 school year. Mr. Goodwin.
Good evening. I come before you tonight to let you know that we do have a shortage with substitutes this year. I believe you had an attachment with the rates that we were paying our substitute teachers, and I ask tonight for you to help us by increasing the rates for the substitute pay. This is actually coming out of our personnel budget for the year. We already have this money budgeted, but we need to increase the rate. I believe the addendum that you received should have the rates moving our full-time substitute teacher for the full day to $100 per day. Substitute teacher half-day pay, $50. That will be the actual pay that goes to the employee. Then there's a bill rate there. And then a long-term substitute teacher, $100 per day. Would you like me to detail what it was before?
And that would really come out of the line item for subs, because right now we're having difficulty getting subs into in the buildings. And so that money that is still there, that is budgeted towards that line item, because we're not able to fill those substitute positions, it's still there. So by increasing the rate, our hope is that we will attract more substitutes to come in and help in filling those positions on a daily basis, and we believe we will stay within budget.
Restate what the new rate is.
Okay.
Be glad to do that.
Sorry, I closed my paperwork. So the new rate for the substitute, we'd be increasing the rate. We're asking for the new substitute teacher full-day rate to be $100, the pay rate for the employee. Then there's a bill rate that we have to pay for the for our contract at ESS. Substitute teacher half-day pay, we'll be increasing that from $35.63 up to $50, which would be half of what the 100 is, obviously, is the mathematical thinking there. And then the long-term substitute teacher pay, we would be moving that rate up to $100 per day as well. We've been talking regularly with ESS every day. They've tried to find additional substitutes for us. The pay rate that we had been paying folks to come and substitute in our schools just wasn't competitive enough to keep folks busy. So they asked us to take a look at that. In fact, when we increased the rate to 100, they feel like we'll have better luck doing that. We cannot increase this rate without you knowing about it and approving of it, because we do have a contract with ESS, and this would be considered an addendum. So it'd be a change in the pay rate.
What are substitutes for surrounding counties?
They're getting anywhere from $85 to $120 for the full-day rate.
So 100 may not even...
ESS recommended $120, but we are trying to be fiscally responsible to see if we're allowed, you know, able to attract folks at that rate. They feel like we can.
How many subs do we need on a daily basis on the average?
I'm just trying to think off the top of my head. Probably, so there's a difference between the number you need and the number you get. The number we probably need on a regular basis, we all keep an eye on that. I'd say probably 60.
It depends upon the day of the week. Normally Mondays and Fridays are much greater. Tuesdays through Thursdays, a little bit less. So I'd say during the middle of the week, you're probably looking at around 40-ish or something like that. And then on Mondays and Fridays, it tends to increase.
Up to 60. We're not able to fill a lot of positions. If there are a number of schools, based on the coronavirus we have that's active right now, we have employees that are out, and we also have substitutes that are out. So we're having to have a number of people sort of shift around. And what we hope is that we can attract more people to the employment pool so that we can get qualified people in our classrooms rather than people having to not have planning times and things like that to cover. It's been difficult this year, just to be completely honest.
Are teachers in our special ways to fulfill these positions that we need for substitutes, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what's happening in our schools at this moment. Qualified adults is providing supervision and the best instruction that they can, but we need more people in our buildings.
And this is something that all schools are experiencing, just the shortage in staffing and the shortage in subs. But, you know, we felt that the $100 per day would be a competitive rate. Of course, you know, we can look at increasing that if that's the direction that the board would like to go above that $100.
Has ESS suggested anything in addition to the $100? I know they do some things within their organization, like if you work three Fridays in a row, they'll...
If you work three days a month, you receive benefits through ESS. If you work 21 days in a row, you get a higher rate of pay, which is considered long-term and things like that. So those are the things that they have built in. But even they have had difficulty with what I would call incentives to attract people even to ESS. One particular story this week is one of our high schools has needed a number of folks in their building. So all of us called Dr. Ballinger, but we all work together on a daily basis to make sure our schools are, you know, filled with great employees. So one of the issues that we had was finding folks. So they have two folks that they found this week, but it takes two or three days to hire those people in what they call onboard them. So they're going to end up being long-term. You might be familiar with, we still have a few jobs open on our board. If you look at the employment board, we have some full-time positions I haven't been able to fill. And that's related to some of the same things, qualifications, people in the pool. But we're in Region Four. I'm sure you all know that already. And everyone in Region Four and beyond is having the exact same problems, from here to Fairfax and as far south as Region Four goes and west and to the east. We're all experiencing the same thing right now. A smaller job pool and the virus.
Well, I support the increase, but also I think we need to revisit it. We need to raise it again.
And your rates that you're getting is, right now, we're anywhere between $80 to $120?
That's right.
Right there in the middle.
I mean, we haven't signed the contract yet, and you haven't approved it. So I mean, if you're wanting to increase the rate...
If you want to go to 120, we can do that tonight.
Yeah, we're not saying 100 is safe. It might be for right now, but should that not do the trick?
Well, I mean, you know, we took ESS's recommendation. We thought that it would be competitive. But again, this is a tough market that we're in. You know, we could even go as far as to increase that to 110. That still makes us competitive. And move that to 55 for half-day.
Would 110 for long-term do anything to move the needle, do you think?
You mean just suggesting that if someone serves 21 days for the long-term pay, be 120, 110 or 120? Would that move the needle? I believe it might help. So you could go 150 and 120? Is that what your suggestion is? 120 for long-term?
610 or 120?
I'm sorry, maybe I said 120, you said 110.
If you want to move the needle, I'm willing to go long-term, because long-term's where I think, I mean, I know subs are important, that kind of thing, but long-term, you know, where we've got a class, a math class, that we need somebody in there, some continuity is where I feel like we have been hurt in the past.
And each one of these people is important, but you're right about that.
Yeah, and what I've heard here is, my child's science teacher was out for a long period of time, and it was just different substitutes. If we can, if that would help move the needle on long-term substitutes, I think I'd be one to suggest that.
And we've been looking, I know Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Smith both have been working on it, but we've been trying to, we've been trying to get two building site subs for quite some time now. We just, they're not able to fill those positions. If that position goes from what the rate was of 70...
It was 71.25.
71, and you jump that, because that would basically be a long-term, because they're going to report to that building daily and be able to be put in whatever classroom that principal needs them in. You jump that to 120, that's a $50 a day rate increase that you're seeing for those positions.
And to be completely honest, every long-term substitute we have is an opportunity for us to invite someone else to join our team long-term, you know, and to help them through the process of becoming licensed or certified or highly qualified to serve in any of our positions. They really are serving as the backbone for us in those classrooms so parents can know that there's one adult that's going to be there every day.
I feel like, I feel like we could, you know, we could maybe hit the market harder with that rather than wait and, you know, having to go back and say, well, the $100 didn't help us a whole lot.
Okay. Dr. Benz?
Yeah, I agree with that. So let me see if I understand this correctly. Increase the substitute teacher full-day pay to $100 a day, substitute teacher half-day pay to $50 a day, and long-term substitute teacher to $120 a day. Is that in agreement with everyone?
Yes.
Yes. Someone would like to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that the addendum to the agreement between the Warren County School District and ESS Northeast LLC be approved with the modification of long-term substitute pay rate increasing from 100 to $120 per day.
Is there a second?
I'll second her.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Stay where you are. Approval of additional instructional assistance for school support.
This is directly related to the item that we just addressed and to the comments or remarks that Dr. Ballinger made at our last meeting on September 1st. As you may recall, Dr. Ballinger mentioned moving approximately $1 million of our CARES funds to address instructional needs at the school level. So these grant funds will be used, if you approve, to secure 17 instructional assistants who will provide assistance to the classroom teacher and management, instruction, and personal care of students at all five of our elementary schools, our two middle schools, and two high schools. And we're asking that this would run through the length of the grant, which would be June of 2023. The instructional assistants will meet highly qualified standards, as that's applicable to the particular schools, which, as you all know, is all four of our elementary schools except for AS Rhodes. They do have to be highly qualified to work in all four of those schools that are Title I schools. And they'll be placed on the Warren County Public Schools Instructional Assistant Salary Scale, which happens to be salary scale grade six. So the need here is, as you just mentioned, we're missing employees. And every one of those employees that's not in the classroom impacts learning. And so we want to make sure that we increase our workforce that are there to work with our students and to support the instruction going on in the classrooms and management at the school. The CARES funds are already there, they're already in place. This will be a redirection of those funds by Dr. Ballinger, so we're asking for your approval to add 17 additional staff members for the life of that grant, which would again end on June 2023. These will be full-time positions.
By putting these people in position, it would hopefully cut down on our need for substitutes to some degree.
Yes, that's why I would say it's directly related, yes.
I'm all for this. Hopefully, we can find these 17 people.
That's right.
And instructional assistants are easier to find than bachelors or certified teachers. And so I believe almost all of our schools that, when we did the 17 instructional assistants, all except maybe one or two, still have, have filled their positions.
We filled pretty much every position, and then out of those, a couple of folks have found other positions since we've hired them in a different area or something like that. So it was very attractive, I will say that. So I really, we all appreciate the fact that you supported our school in that way. I do have a number of people who have called expressing interest in instructional assistant positions. I reached out to some this week, just in hopes that I could maintain that contact, just in case you all decided this was a good idea.
Is there any further discussion?
I was just going to say that I have spoken to a couple of teachers, and particularly to a couple of substitutes, who say that the instructional assistants have been an excellent addition to be able to, you know, focus and assist or help those students who need some extra help. So yeah, I support it as well.
And Madam Chairman, I move that the Warren County School Board approve 17 instructional assistant positions to be employed through June 2023.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
If I could take one more second.
Sure.
In my new role, I just wanted to say it has been an incredible opportunity to see how hard a working workforce that we do have and the qualities they have and the extra mile that they're willing to go above and beyond. And I know Dr. Ballinger will probably talk about this as well, but we really appreciate that work and the support you give us. So thank you.
Work session. Presentation by Samuel's Public Library on a proposed amphitheater. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. In 2008, Warren County School Board entered into agreement with the county of Warren to lease a portion of the acreage and so forth there on Criver Road adjacent to Ressie Jeffries. And a, we built a library and on that site we're all aware of, and we have a MOU with the county with that property. We still are the landowners of that. And the county has a MOU with the public library. And that lease that we have is a 30-year lease that we did back in 2008. And Dr. Ballinger and Mr. Levise and myself about a month or so ago had the privilege to be called to a meeting to the Samuel's Public Library. And at that meeting, we were presented with a presentation of a possible project that the library would like to pursue. And I'm not going to take thunder away from their presentation, but I know that Dr. Ballinger, myself, and Mr. Levise were very impressed with the project and so forth that they would like to do. Our role in this realistically is that at some point, since we still are the landowners of that, that there would be a process that would come back to us to give the blessing upon just saying that we're okay with this particular project. And there's not a lot so much involved for ourselves as a board. And in this evening's presentation, this is informational. There's not really a decision and so forth that needs to be made at this time. It's just, here is something that they're interested in doing, a project, and some of the story behind it and some visuals. And so to stop from me stealing any of their thunder, there will be a few introductions. Eileen Grady will come up first, and then she will make some comments and then do her introductions, and we'll turn it over to her team. So kind of sit back and enjoy the presentation.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Eileen Grady, and I am the Director of Operations at Samuel's Public Library. Thank you for giving us time this evening to show you our proposal for an amphitheater at the library. If the pandemic has taught us anything, it's that we need to be nimble. We need to have multiple ways to approach services. From a programming perspective, an outdoor venue would offer many possibilities, not just for the library, but for the schools and the community as well. To fill you in on the genesis and advancement of the project, please allow me to introduce the driving force behind the proposal, Melody Hotek. Melody has been a longtime volunteer at the library. She has served as president of the Friends of the Library and currently serves on the Library Board of Trustees. Melody?
Hi, I'm Melody. I get the fun part. My husband Jeff was a bookworm, and when we retired at Front Royal about 10 years ago, he volunteered almost immediately at the library. As we would go to the library, the hillside between Ressie Jeffries and the library is on this perfect slant. And every time we'd go by there, I'd be, it needs to be an amphitheater, make me an amphitheater. And so year after year, I'd keep nudging the library. He passed away a few years ago and left money in his estate for the library. So we had seed money. We have gotten approval from the boards, and hopefully we can bring this to the community. The vision through this is, I see library programs, school programs, community programs, and I think it's just going to be a tremendous asset. I won't go into all the different reasons. I'm sure your imagination can know what kind of things could go on there and how much it would benefit everybody. Luckily, my husband's brother, Dan, is an engineer, so this is definitely a Hotek project. It's in the family, and Front Royal Warren County is very lucky to have had Dan...
Over 30 years?
25.
25 years. And we came to Front Royal because of coming to visit and then exploring the area. So Dan's qualifications are too long to list, but I will let him finish the introduction and give you what our conceptual drawings and the vision is for this. Turn it over to Dan.
Thank you. Sure. The last one is going to be, just hit that, you know, for the next slide. Just go. This one right here. Okay. So thank you again for your time. I've enjoyed, I grew up in a small community in Minnesota, and I knew that small communities, you're either accepted or you're not. And when I landed in Front Royal in 1995, I was adopted as one of the go-to people in town, and I've enjoyed working with tremendous number of people through the last 25 years providing structural engineering services. As you can tell from Melody's energy, she is the energy of the project, and so hopefully I can put some feet to what she's envisioning. Let's see. There we go.
Can you cut the lights down some to the... Thank you, Mr. Park.
Perfect. So if you see the red square, that's the general area that the amphitheater is being thought of right now. Right now, pretty much as Melody said, just about anything is open for change, but we wanted to, we got to start someplace. So this is where we begin. I just give you a photo tour of the site. We're standing, looking south at where the location will be. We have, one of the unique features of the project is, if you see the riprap point on there, this is discharging. And this spring, we all said, well, we've never seen water there. Well, what, three weeks ago, we saw a lot of water there. It is, it's a real feature that has to be dealt with. I was sent photos from Melody, from the library staff apparently, that the existing bridge was right at the water level. So there is a significant amount of water that flows there under the conditions that we had these last three weeks. So part of our design, and you'll see that accounts for that issue. So this is just kind of tracking around the hillside, looking back at the site. In the future, the amphitheater would be blocking our view from the library. It's dead straight ahead. So I'm walking up the hill. Ressie Jeffries is right behind me. This is the gate that leads to the bridge that children come down from Ressie Jeffries. Brained structure. And now I'm looking back to the north where the photos began. One of the things we have to overcome, the air handler is very loud. We would probably end up having to put some sort of sound attenuation inside the chamber here, just trying to talk on the hillside. We were already having to talk loudly to overcome this, so one of the issues. And then also, probably not the prominent thing you want right behind an amphitheater. So you'll see in the presentation, we're looking at some sort of a barrier that will add some dignity to the site rather than being the back of the building. So this is a...
Hold on, give us a second.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, it's about a 30-second walk around this proposed structure. Again, just, this could be completely different in the future, but this is where we're starting. You'll see in the background, five tiers where chairs or just people sitting could be. As the camera zooms through that wall, that was the back wall that we're thinking about to protect from the sound and also just as a backdrop. So this would be a stage, approximately, the way it's drawn is about 40 feet wide, about 24 feet deep. If you notice, it's elevated above the grade to avoid the water. And you can just see, each of those tiers are about 40 feet long, set about six feet apart. There'd be about, right now, just seating as those people are, there'd be approximately 120 adults, maybe 180 children that could be sitting on those seats as is. If you've been through Wolf Trap, you see there's also grass and there's a hillside, so we're envisioning you could have blankets and other folks, you know, sitting all the way around those. For small presentations, the presenter could be on that podium in the front. And picture a, you know, a classroom of children on that front row being involved in that. You can see behind it is a, just a thought, a wall that would act as a backdrop. It'd also act as a structure to attach cables, various things. So let's say a theatrical group wants to give a presentation, they could set up their world behind there. They wouldn't have to set up posts or poles, they could come off the wall. Acoustically, we'll be working with a team of people throughout the community that have already started to volunteer to try to make it as acoustically viable as possible without speakers. But certainly we'll be setting up so that as groups come in, there'll be attachment points, there would be lighting, things of that sort. In our initial meeting with the superintendent and others, you know, we talked about safety being, you know, primary. As you notice, the handrails went up. You know, it's just, it's a pretty good drop-off onto rock riprap on either side, so that would now be a good thing. Just other thoughts, you know, trying to keep it simple so that it doesn't create, you know, yet another maintenance issue, another security issue with, you know, having to secure chairs or things like that, you know, exteriors, and now you have another set of doors to check and all those things. So the intent is to keep it simple but useful, structurally simple, and certainly through our contacts, you know, getting a good idea of what our costs are before we venture forward. Any questions?
I think that's a great idea. Mr. Melody, to be whispered as Mrs. Hotek was speaking, it said, "A mini wolf trap."
There you go.
I think too, I think too, it might help with some, possible some tourism coming in. And tourism dollars really don't cost the county anything.
Correct. I, yeah, I think there's, if we do it right, you know, it should have some draw. Certainly, you know, various musical groups that are looking for venues, you know, here it is. And they can generate, you know, it goes back and forth. They get to perform because they just like to perform, but then it is something for the community to come to. So, yeah, we're pretty excited. You can see the wall in the back, that was one of the later additions, but I think again, just visually, you know, it... But I think, again, just visually, you know, it will help. So, I mean, six months from now, this could look totally different, but here's the concept that we're launching the project with.
Beautiful vision that your late brother and late husband had. Thank you for sharing that, and I hope we see it come soon.
Very good. And as I understand, I'll see for the team, ultimately, we need your go-ahead. I mean, that is our intent tonight, is just so that at some point, we don't want to launch and then later, you know, the board says, "Eh, well, not really." So, if, however you want to do it formally or informally, you know, some document that says you're good to go. That was what we were, our intent is. Thank you very much. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. So, where do we need to go?
So, I think we probably need for, to look at the agreement with the county and have Brad make sure that everything is good with that agreement. And then, bring that at the, at the next meeting for you guys to approve that agreement, to see if that's the direction you want to go.
Other comments?
No, I think, you know, as soon as they can get something drawn up, then we could formally work. If you want an informal go-ahead, you know, we can take a straw poll here, but I'm certainly in favor of it. Would support it whatever fashion we need to.
Okay. So, we'll see that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, as far as just working through and, and it may be that we can get the county attorney just to draw something up and then just have Brad.
Sure. It won't be a complicated process.
No, it should not. It should be pretty simple. But we need to go through those steps with the county because the lease is with the county. And so, we officially have to give the county permission to give the library permission to, so there's a couple of steps in there.
Great. Thank you. Instruction update report. Mr. Fox.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to update you with several things that are going on in our school system. And one of the most prevalent is students that are learning in quarantine. And also, what might happen if we were forced to close our schools down for any period of time. So, I'll start with instruction during the school closure. If we were to close down, instruction would include synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities. Students would access their assignments and supporting materials through their current learning management system. Teachers would be expected to have content available in advance of each lesson. Of course, one of the things that makes this possible is that in kindergarten through 12, we have one-to-one access through our Chromebooks. We also, last year, purchased several new textbooks. And these new textbooks have online materials that are associated with them. Instructions for student access to the online textbooks will be available through the students' LMS. Courses with online textbooks, in kindergarten through the eighth grade, we have English, math, and science. Our secondary courses with online access include English 9 through 12, algebra, geometry, Algebra II, calculus, biology, chemistry, environmental science, AP Environmental Science, earth science, astronomy, human anatomy and physiology, AP European History, Spanish, and Latin. So, again, if we were forced to close down, our system would look very much like it did last year, where we would have to turn our cameras on. But we have over a year's worth of experience, and we feel that we'd be able to pick up right away if that circumstance were to come about. Moving on, we have students that are, yes, sir.
Do we have any opportunity to do a dry run? I know that's a huge undertaking to, you know, say, "We're going to take everything live." But do we have some opportunities to make sure that if it happens, we don't, this doesn't break down, or this doesn't break down?
Absolutely. But my first thought, and I want to, I want to look to Tim Grant in just a second, but before I do that, I'll give Tim a second to catch up. This will happen. This is an inevitable, not necessarily because of COVID, but because of our opportunity to have school days during snow days. So, this will be, it's inevitable that it will happen. And as far as the function, I want to ask Tim, and I'm putting him in the crowd as well, as far as the functionality. Mr. Grant, do you have concerns about being able to do this right away?
No. The only concerns would be those that don't have their Chromebooks released to their home at this time. But we do have a few classes. I think they're keeping their Chromebooks in class. And they need to start letting them take them home. But we have hotspots. We have additional hotspots this year. Some of our hotspots were limited, and we have taken care of that. So, they are unlimited now. And we have one-to-one Chromebooks, and we're expecting more to come in the near future to replace some of the older ones.
And Mr. Wells, I didn't mean to sidestep your question either, as far as a practice one. My mind says that we're already doing this. And as we start talking about instruction during quarantine, you'll see that some of our teachers are already having class meetings and virtual meetings. So, the functionality to do it class by classroom is already there. Now, I guess the idea of doing it with all 500 teachers and 5,000 students, we have not discussed the possibility of doing it for a day. But that is something that we can discuss further when we get back to a situation.
As far as the days we have in our calendar, and with Senate Bill 1303, they only, they will only let us shut school down for 10 days at the max. So, right now, we have a waiver for 10 days. And so, if we, if we do get to a point where we would have to shut down, we wouldn't want to use one of those days if we needed that full two-week period, those 10 days. You know, the one thing that I say, think that we could do is, you know, make sure that those, those practices are happening at the school. I know that, in talking to a lot of the elementary principals, that even if, really at the lower grades, if they were working with their kids, teaching them the Chromebooks, how to log in, where to go, so they're going over those things. And that's why Mr. Grant said, some of them have not been sent home yet, because teachers are practicing with those students in the classroom on a daily basis to get them used to using those devices. But, you know, and as far as, so I don't think that it would, we would be able to do that just simply because of the time constraints that we have as far as our calendar. And what's Senate Bill 1303? Of course, we don't have any snow days built into our school here this year.
All right. Just one other question for Mr. Grant. You mentioned the hotspots.
Yes.
How, how would you anticipate those getting to the students for a snow day?
So, each of the schools has a batch of hotspots, and all they need to do is contact the schools and come, come pick them up.
So, they should probably, we should probably look at the schools checking out right now, the students that may need a hotspot, and getting them in their hands.
Yeah, most, in most cases, they already have them. If they can't get internet at their house, they already have them. But there's, we have additional as well. So...
So, maybe, Mr. Fox, we could check the principals that are meeting tomorrow to have them start rechecking that hotspot list for, as far as for the students that they have in the buildings that may need additional Wi-Fi at their house. And then, they'll start doing that, preparing for that in advance.
That's a good idea. And thank you, Mr. Wells. Appreciate that. Moving on, things that are happening, as far as instruction during quarantine in our elementary schools. Our preschool students are learning to use their tablets at school, as you would expect for kindergarten students. And the preschool learning management system is called CSOL. But even though we have a learning management system at kindergarten, many of our lessons and assignments are still going to be paper-based. On this, as we move on to the upper grades beyond kindergarten, basic lessons will be provided on the Learning Management Schoology for students in grades one through five. And on Schoology, in addition to the basic lesson, you might find links to virtual lessons. You could find new virtual lessons. And you'll certainly see assignments and resources on the LMS. Students in quarantine, here's something very important, and I'm glad to make a point of this. Students in quarantine that access and complete their lessons daily will be counted present. That is based on something that came from our state superintendent. I'll take a second to find that. This comes from, came from the state superintendent on August the 18th, 2001, Dr. Lane. And I'm going to go back to page three. Quarantining students. Division should be prepared to transition individual students in and out of quarantine, learning for quarantine related to COVID-19. A student who is not ill and is able to participate in remote instruction should be offered meaningful opportunities to do so. Students should be counted as present or absent during that division's policy on attendance tracking. So, again, we've made, we've used this statement from Dr. Lane to explain that students that are accessing their LMS and turning in their assignments on a regular basis, even though they have been placed on quarantine, will be counted present. And that's a very important part of this. They must be placed on quarantine or must be in isolation. This cannot be something that a parent takes upon themselves to keep their child at home. Okay, just to be very clear about that. At the elementary school, supplemental paper assignments will also be available. Parents are encouraged to send student work to their child's teacher electronically. And when possible, we ask that parents send pictures and examples of their child's writing to their teachers because that's such an important skill at the early age. They want to be able to see the progress that the students are making. School staff are to ensure that parents are provided ample instruction on how to help their child. Now, in addition to using the LMS and the paper assignments, teachers may also choose to reach out directly to parents with assignments that are more specific to their child. So, the basic, the baseline is to make sure that you have things on Schoology. But our elementary teachers, all of our teachers came to us and said that they need to go above and beyond. And they may give assignments that are more specific to a particular child. This could be in the form of a phone call or a virtual meeting. And as we talk about things that are more specific with these children, we have, we have approved that teachers that work beyond the school day with students in quarantine will be paid $25 a day, up to, and they could do that every day of the week. So, if you have a student on quarantine, you could set up a Google Meet for that child, or perhaps you have two or three children quarantined. And since they're working beyond their regular contract hours, they will be paid for that. They could be tutoring and helping. But the main expectation is that teachers will maintain a strong teacher-student relationship, because it must be terrible to be away from your classmates for five days, seven days, 10 days. And we want to make sure that that appropriate teacher-student relationship remains strong. Now, the middle school and the high school are very similar. I'm going to try and just hit some of the highlights if I could. In the middle school, they have a different LMS. They're using something called Canvas. And again, they have basic lessons, and a teacher may go above and beyond the basic lessons. I guess the biggest thing is that at the middle school, the teachers have an advisory period. So, during that advisory period, there, once students come off of quarantine, students will be given the opportunity to go into this time that's set aside for enrichment and acceleration. And it's in the regular day. So, they don't have to search out their teacher after school. They probably have a lot of things they have to catch up on. So, we can do this enrichment and remediation during the school day. I'll go forward to the high school. And again, very similar, the basic lesson will be available on their learning management system, which is Canvas. And teachers may go above and beyond. We have so many lessons that were taught last year that were recorded. We know that some of our teachers are using some of their taped lessons from last year because they felt they had a very good product at times. And so, we're able to learn from what we did last year and use some of those lessons. Some of our teachers are also providing live instruction, live meets. And at the high school, they also have an advisory period, but that advisory period rotates. And so, depending on what day of the week it is, you might have English remediation one day or math remediation one day. It's based on a student's individual schedule. So, speaking about learning in quarantine and what we're doing, I will ask if you have any questions about this?
Do we have a clearinghouse or just somebody that a parent can plug in to and understand all of this that you're saying? Do we have one simple way that me as a parent, I can find out everything that you just said and how to access everything you just said?
Yes, sir. And I'll go on, I would say that that person is the school administration. The school, if they can't get it straight from their teacher, our telephones are manned all day long, and they can certainly, if they can't get the actual principal, they can get an assistant principal, or an assistant principal, or a dean. And if they, even if they can't get them right then, the assistant principal will call them back within 24 hours. So, that would be my, my suggestion, my recommendation.
Since, since the learning management systems are a little bit different, you wouldn't want one place that, you know, my child's at elementary and I'm using CSOL, but then I have my child at middle school and they're using Canvas. So, we want to kind of leave that to the schools specifically to get that pushed out. And Mr. Fox made point of this, and all of our teachers really wanted to individualize the instruction for their students this year, because they knew coming out of and looking at our test scores and, and knowing what our SOL scores were last year, and then as they go through and do the testing right now, they know that there's different levels within, within that classroom. There always will be. But this year, those differences are greater than what they would be in a typical year. And so, those teachers really want to focus on the individual student and try to find that, that material that they really need, instead of putting that out there for, on CSOL or Canvas that is, you know, maybe it's below the student's level, or maybe it's way behind, way above the student's level. So, really, they want to focus on the individual student at the elementary level and also at the middle and high school for that remediation to make sure we're closing those gaps.
So, I guess, in answer to my question, if my child finds out that they have to be quarantined, the first thing they should do is contact their teacher. If they're elementary, if they're, if they're high school or middle school where they have more than one teacher, reach out to each of those teachers, reach out to the principal at Skyline or Warren County. What, what would I say? Tell, tell the folks where they, you know...
Well, absolutely. So, we certainly know which students are on quarantine. And I want to say that there is a list that teachers will know that their student is on quarantine. So, then, hadn't thought about this question, Mr. Wells. So, I'm trying to think what the process would be. We certainly know who the students are.
With the attendance, we were preloading that with a virtual present.
Thank you.
We were, so the attendance clerk is going in at the power school when we know a student is going on quarantine. And they are preloading for 10 days a code, VR or VP, virtual present. And so, that then alerts that teacher when they're doing their, their attendance that day, that, "Oh, this student is virtually present. That means I'm going to have to reach out to that student and make a connection here in order to provide the services while that student is on quarantine." Because it automatically shows up for them. That means I'm going to have to reach out to that student and make a connection here in order to provide the services while that student is on quarantine because it automatically shows up for them when they are doing attendance through, through their, through their classroom on, on a daily basis. And so that teacher really, at the secondary level, the teachers are going to really coordinate that. And really, most of the time, you're going to see that at all of your levels. The principal will get involved or the administration will get involved. If there's, if, if there is something that has fallen through the cracks, or maybe we have missed something, and then we get that phone call, then we will call and check on it. Because those, those teachers are going to be responsive when they see that VP code on Power School to know that I need to reach out to this student.
And I regret this because I, I rushed through, I rushed through the middle school and the high school, some of my prepared statements. Students every day are encouraged to log into their LMS. The LMS has, again, the basic, basic lesson. They have videos, they have assignments. So that should be par for the course for every class, whether a student's there or not there. So a student who's in quarantine would by, by, just by having done it repeatedly, should know to log into their LMS because that's where the lessons would be.
And, and, and a lot of those, depending upon how, how they have their class set up, you know, those, as Mr. Fox said, a lot of teachers are just going ahead and they put all of their lessons and all of their homework on the LMS. So even when that, that student is in the classroom, they're going to give the lecture, they're going to give the instruction, but then that student has to go to the LMS to do the assignment. So when that student goes on quarantine in some of those classes where those teachers have set it up that way, they're not skipping a beat because all the stuff is already on their Chromebook and already out there on, on, on the LMS. Then it's just making that connection to make sure they have the instruction that they need.
Thanks. I want to give you a quick update on the assessments that are going, but I want to give you an example of something as well. Thank you, sir. So as we begin the school year, we're giving assessments throughout the division. And one of the newest assessments is something that's come from the Virginia Department of Education, also called growth assessments. One of the things that a growth assessment produces is a student detail by question report. And the student detail question report is what I've given you. It gives you, if you look up, there is a, there's a vertical scaled score in the upper right-hand corner. And what we've been told is that this is a data point. It is something provided so that we'll be able to show growth throughout the school year. And in speaking with Mrs. Walton, this is not to be overemphasized, this is supposed to be a point in time so, so that we can see what progress a student has made throughout the year. But also, you'll see under the reporting categories, this particular one talks about demonstrates comprehension of fictional text and use of word analysis strategies. These, these item descriptors will point our teachers in the direction of where they need to go with our individual students as far as remediation. So they'll know this, this growth assessment, if you were a, a fourth grade student last year, then the growth assessment was based on the fourth grade standards of learning. And they tell me it's a very similar test. So it's not accessing, it's not trying to assess anything new, it's trying to assess from the previous year. So, yeah, I'm going to read this a minute. In 2021, the Virginia General Assembly introduced a new expectation for state assessments in elementary and middle school. They are called through-year assessments. The purpose of these new assessments is to measure student growth and progress in reading and mathematics content standards. Based on this legislation, students in grades three through eight will be taking a Virginia growth assessment this fall. For fall of 2021, the VGA will focus on identifying potential learning gaps resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. Most Warren County public schools in grades three through eight will take VGAs in the subject areas of reading and math. Students enrolled in a high school-level math course such as algebra will not be assessed. The VGA is a computer-adapted test consisting of SOL-type items. Questions cover content that would have been taught in a previous grade level. VGAs must be taken at the school under the supervision of school staff. So this is essentially the same thing as any SOL test, and it is the same conditions. Schools will provide information about the test schedule for their building. And that's going on in grades three through eight. For grades one and two, the PALS test. One of the most effective strategies for preventing reading difficulties is accurate early identification. The phonological awareness literacy screening, the PALS, is a proactive and preventative screening measure that assists teachers in providing differentiated targeted instruction to meet the needs of a child. They have several different tests within the PALS. The oral reading and context task is timed in order to calculate an oral reading rate. They have at the entry level, they have word knowledge, spelling, word recognition, letter sounds. For oral reading, they have accuracy, fluency, oral reading rate, and comprehension. Alphabet recognition looks for letter sounds, concept of words. And for phonemic awareness, they talk about blending. I, I think I expanded on those with, with more below. And so again, that's the PALS, which is one through three. And then finally, we move on to the VKRP. And the VKRP, VKRP measures students' early mathematics, their self-regulation, and social skills. And this is used to complement Virginia's existing, existing assessment of literacy skills. So I have some additional information on, on the growth assessments, but if you have questions about assessments that we're, we're taking this fall, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Facilities, child nutrition, transportation report. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. In your packet, you should have a, a document that will outline a few projects, a few activities, and those type of things that are going on within facilities, child nutrition, and or transportation. There are way more than what you have listed here, but I thought I'd highlight a few of some of our activities and so forth that's going on, some projects. With facilities, AS Rhodes Elementary School, the renovations are now complete, the new windows, the rollerblades installed with the bus loop asphalt resurfaced prior to the beginning of the school year. The HVAC systems are now functioning as designed, and Lance Construction has received the full occupancy permit. And with that project, I'll, I'll start to open up an invite to board members, the Board of Education here, the Board of Supervisors, if you'd like to, to come out and to see, see the school and those type of things, and see some of the changes if you have not already done some of those type of things. AS Rhodes, we know is our smallest school that sits up on top of the hill and those type of things. It's well-loved, it's a very beloved school and those type of things. So it's very nice to see all those extra things done to it to, to make it continue to be a home for our students and our staff out there. The greenhouse, on the backside of Skyline High School, and around that backside of the practice field and so forth, is a greenhouse, has been put up, very nice greenhouse. It's, the construction is completed, we have received the final building inspection from the county and those type of things. So I know that Mr. Kenny and some of the other teachers out there are already very excited about things that they can do with their, with their greenhouse. So that's, that's exciting. If you'd like to go out and see that sometime as well, it's just on the very backside of that school. It has a very solid pad of concrete setting under it that we, that we had put in there because there were quite a few rock and those type of things under that end. But, but we're, we're excited that that, that is complete. The middle school, Skyline Middle School, the exterior painting of windows and the front entry columns for the historical part of the school is, was completed. Replacement of one set of concrete stairs and approximately 350 linear feet of sidewalk completed. And this was done there toward the end of, the, prior to the school year, there toward the end of the, of the summer. Some upcoming activities that we have, our HVAC grants and those type of things have been approved by the Virginia Department of Education. And at our last board meeting, the board gave permission to move forward for Dr. Ballinger to sign off on those contracts. Our legal team has reviewed the contracts, made changes and so forth, that we have moved forward now with Grim and Parker. And, and they, Grim and Parker has been in contact with Mr. Levy C. and myself throughout the week. And as soon as we get the, their contract back from us that we sent to them, then we'll send that to our attorney. And then we'll, once we agree upon everything, Dr. Ballinger will be able to sign off. And our goal is to have that in place by the 17th. Restroom facility update. If you remember at, recall at one of our previous board meetings, I mentioned or did a proposal and so forth to do a comprehensive study of just our restroom facilities in general throughout the school division and to focus on privacy for all students and those type of things. And, you know, what can we be able to provide for our students as well as to make sure that we, we stay in compliance and so forth, and that we serve all our students of our school division. And so an update on that is that preliminary assessments of facilities have been conducted at the secondary level. Dr. Ballinger, myself, Mr. Fox, Mr. Levy C., along with the assistance of our principals, we have gone out to each school. We have did an assessment to look at the various type of restroom facilities that we have, whether we have the larger team-type restroom facilities, or we have the individual single-user restrooms. And we have identified which restrooms and so forth are, would be available for, for, for all of our students. And that, we ordered signs to identify restrooms that are available to our staff, students, and so forth, and just make sure that we just have the proper signage on the, on the restrooms outside. And those would be your single-user restrooms that would be available for male and/or female, and also make sure that they're, they have the handicap accessible signs. They're all handicap accessible, but just, we, we took this opportunity too, just to make sure all our signage was, was correct. Actually, our, our signage update, our signs have actually, they came in actually just this week, and that we would be putting those just up in place for, for next week. So it really doesn't change so much of what we, what we've done in the past and so forth, but it provides the opportunity for our single-user restrooms that we may have just had specified for teachers or so forth, or faculty and those type of things, that if they're in a place where we can also have those accessible for everyone, including the students, we're able to do that as well. Once our prelim information has been gathered, which we're, we're very much close to that stage, our comprehensive study team will be called together for a review, elaboration, and recommendation. Mr. Levy C. also has worked on getting information in regards to partitions and so forth in restrooms as far as just for our stalls and, and those type of things, just to increase, increase privacy for, for, for all students. Child nutrition services. Sedexo is serving over 4,500 meals per day since we, since we began schools. And that's spread out over all of our schools, which according to our food service director is, is incredible. Sedexo has 44 employees, and they're currently onboarding another four employees. As Mr. Goodwin had mentioned earlier, and in regards to finding people to, to work in positions that we have, not only in the schools but in general, I think everything that we go into any business or store, there's one sign outside the mask that we normally see, and that's Health Wanted, are now hiring and those type of things. So the challenges that we're seeing isn't just isolated to particular retail and businesses, and also it affects us in, in the school district. I know that we were down roughly seven people in the child nutrition services, but hopefully with these four employees coming on board, that we'll be able to, to have an adequate amount of staff to continue to serve the needs of our students. Our people have done a wonderful job, all our people in all our different departments and so forth, of kicking in and helping out in any way they can. So our food service people are, are working diligently and doing that. The students who are coming through the serving line at lunchtime for sixth through 12th grade have additional choices this year instead of just having one entree option. And that was something that we were so hopeful to have at the beginning of the year when we, when we had less restrictions and so forth with our COVID, and is, is more the opportunity of, of things that we could offer and add into the cafeteria. But at the secondary level, we've been able to still maintain, at least offer some additional options of choices for students. At the elementary level, meal delivery is still going on. We have a lot of our, most of our classes, our, their students are eating in the classroom and, and those type of things. This, this creates where we have to create almost like a, a new system of how to get the food there. Fortunately, we just used an old system, which was new to us last year when we did it. So it was already in place and those type of things. And the teachers have been wonderful, the students have been wonderful. And as we do anything in any type of service, sometimes things break down. And, and over at Hill to J. Barber, we've had some oven equipment that, that is, it's getting, it's getting old. And, well, it is old. And it is having a little bit of trouble staying going to, to stay at the temperature that we need. We're, we've got some quotes and those type of things on some, some additional ovens. We're still going to continue to go through our process of being able to, to fix our equipment and those type of things, but there will come a point on some of that where you're just throwing good money, you know, away and those type of things. So we don't want to do that. So we are looking at some, some quotes for that. Our food service budget is in very good shape, very good shape. So if we had to come before the board to request, to, for an expenditure, we would be in very good shape with that. Transportation. Transportation, Mr. Mitchell, over the last couple of days, has sent a couple of articles to myself and Dr. Ballinger in regards to bus shortages that were seen around the country in general. A lot of the things that we're experiencing here in Warren County, we're not, you know, we're not strange or unique or those type of things. We're, we're like everyone else, and, but it's so, I don't want to like look at someone else's problems and say they're worse, but there are worse situations going on out there. And I know that Massachusetts, for example, I believe, was bringing in some of the guard members and those type of things to start to drive school buses in some of their counties to, to, to get that around. And I do, Mr. Mitchell had sent me earlier an article and so forth that Virginia has not made that decision as of yet. But it just goes to show you, the, the stress it's put upon all divisions and those type of things. So I'm, I'm thankful and I feel like we're blessed with the people that we have and what they're doing. But we're down around seven people in transportation, that's including about four drivers or so. So that's, that's concerning. Mr. Mitchell is, has a couple of people working on their training and those type of things. And we're keeping an eye on, on that. I'm fortunate that our three directors in these three areas of facilities, child nutrition and transportation, we pretty much talk on a daily basis, whether it's in person or on the phone or those type of things, just seeing how things are going. And, and, and they're doing a tremendous job. In transportation, Mr. Mitchell wanted me to share that they, they continue to do their route reviews and adjustments, and they're constantly looking at the load balance that we have as far as with the students and their ride times, try to keep those ride times down as much as possible. We had eight new buses that we purchased last We had eight new buses that we purchased last year and so forth. And as we recall, those buses were air conditioned buses. And sometimes the question comes up, well, how do you distinguish between which route, which trip and so forth gets the air conditioning buses and those type of things? And, you know, it, it takes a little bit of time to figure out what is the most appropriate thing. And what Mr. Mitchell has been doing is he's looked at his longest routes and basically applied the air conditioned buses to his longest routes and then worked back from there and those type of things. And perhaps and hopefully, at some point throughout the years and those, we'll look back and think that we never knew any different than air conditioning buses. So that's how we have applied the buses we've, we've had with air conditioning that we thought was fair because of the amount of time that the students would spend on the bus. Activity routes, remember that we did, we approved some positions for activity drivers to be able to get students after school, once they're finished their activities and those types of things, to, to, to get to at least a spot so they are able to get home or be picked up and those type of things. And the activity routes, honestly, it's still in the planning stages and they're working with schools. Mr. Mitchell's been working with schools to determine times and actual needs. I know that I've had some of the band members or the band directors and so forth reach out and were gathering, Mr. Mitchell's gathering some of the locations of which the students live to try to actually identify a particular spot that would be good to be able to, to take the students to. Anyone that's worked with any type of activities and those type of things after schools, or if yourself have participated in any type of activity that involves you to be after school, sometimes you're completely limited, if not able to compete in a particular or participate in a particular activity simply because you just don't have the transportation. And it's, it's nice if you live close to the school, but as a young man growing up, I lived around 20 miles away from the school. So until I got a car, nothing was going to happen after school other than work at home. So I can appreciate what Mr. Mitchell is attempting to do there. Bus seating charts are completed. And what those are is simply the bus drivers are completing the bus charts of all our students. Some of our students, it's easy to perhaps see a larger student, I don't mean a secondary student or someone sitting there in the seat because you can see them over the seat. But some of our people, obviously who are riding the buses are more the little guys and down the little level. So when you're trying to contract, contact trace and those type of things, sometimes you just can't see them in video. So we've created bus charts and they've been completed. And the collection of these seating charts are on file at transportation. In addition, the charts are available electronically for school administration so they can also access them remotely. Questions or comments or anything that you may have that I could try to answer?
Just to plug in with, with relation to child nutrition, I've, I've worked sort of as a go-between for a couple of different churches in Front Royal as far as the backpack program. That has been regenerated in a large way. And I guess the best thing I can tell the parents is if you have need of backpack nutrition on the weekends, contact your school because the Backpack Buddies organizational program has sort of, for lack of a better term, has sort of aged out. And the individual churches are trying to pick up the schools that they were handling last year or the year before last and that kind of thing. And I know that, at the individual school levels, they have been very helpful in working with those folks. The Methodist Church has, I think, three or four school programs that they're handling. The Episcopal Church is going to pick up several and some other churches are filling in. But I would, if anybody wants to volunteer, reach out to the Episcopal Church, the Methodist Church are the two that I know that are working right now, or reach out to the school. And the school, I know in particular, the school counselors have been great as far as helping to provide numbers, names, that kind of thing. And so the backpack program is going to live again, I guess, this year.
Did letters go home to every student? I know at Ressi we got one from the counselor talking about the program and basically letting you sign up or contact them if you wanted.
I assume so. I don't know for sure, but I assume so.
Maybe we can follow the principals to see how they did that.
In some long-range planning, I was talking with one of the middle school principals and we talked about intermural program for middle school kids. I know that's a little ways down the road. And I think with, and I talked with Mr. Mitchell about it also. And I think if we can include late buses or activity buses for after-school programs for intermurals, that, that should be part of the process as we move forward. I don't think that'll happen sooner rather than later, but we do, we do need to plan for that. Personnel on the bus, et cetera, teachers participating in intermurals, et cetera. I would like to see Warren County switch over to an intermural program, especially for middle school. There's a lot of parts to the puzzle on that.
Sure. I, I know, I give a lot of kudos here to Mr. Fox. And Mr. Fox, who was principal there in Warren County Middle School, out of all the many things that I admire him for and so forth, I thought by adding so many different type of clubs, activities and those type of things, for students to have that connection and that relationship with the school was so important. And so often, so often, sometimes, obviously, we have our, we have our athletics and we have our competitive and we have our co-curricular and those type of things after school, but that's not for all students realistically. It is, it is for all students. They're eligible for those type of things. But I guess what I'm saying is it's not necessarily the cup of tea that everyone wants. I don't want to be there every day for practice. I don't want to leave my weekend stuff and those type of things. But they do want to participate and they do want to be involved. And those type of things, with intermurals or clubs, to me, always, in some previous positions that I've held, I've always said that I want students to participate. I don't care what it is, whether it's sports or clubs or activities and those type of things, because those are the connect, those are the connections. So we definitely can, can look at that. And I can speak with Mr. Mitchell and we can look at going into planning for the upcoming year of what would be available. But I'm confident that we would have students who would want to participate in such things.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next item, discussion of public comment policy. This is something, I think you all received a phone call from me a month ago or so, getting, trying to get your ideas of how we should have our public comment section of the meeting. And everybody had different ideas, so I thought it would be nice to have a discussion on that. However, we don't need to decide on anything until we have all five board members here to discuss that. So my computer is frozen up and I can't get anything to move, but you all have had a chance to look over the information there. Any comments? Do you want to discuss this tonight or do you want to wait until Ms. Samuels is with us?
I mean, I know your goal is, when you brought it to us, you wanted to see how can we work and keep it sort of in a time limit or more organized fashion. I think my strongest opinion about the public comment section is that we need to be able to hear the speaker that's speaking to us and speaking to everyone. So for me, any kind of policy, the most important part would be just some of the, some of the parts that you have about distractions going on in the room and additional side conversations happening and clapping and yelling and that sort of thing, basically maintaining order during our public comment section. That to me is more important than, I'm open to hearing people speak for as long as they want within the time limit that we've provided and whether it be two minutes or three minutes.
Yeah, I think we need to absolutely allow people to speak and voice their opinions. And I'm okay with three minutes. You know, some people had said two minutes, but I'm okay with three minutes.
That's a lot of time. A lot of people don't take the two or three minutes. Others go a little over, but.
I think on, gosh, let's ask. I think on the time limit of 60 minutes, I believe if people come to a meeting and they want to sign up and speak, they should, they shouldn't get cut off at the end. I know that happened with board supervisors one time. And if it means we have to sit here for however long it takes for everybody to, to get their chance to speak, I think we're obligated to do that. So I would not, I would not like to see a time limit placed on public comments. It's depending on what the issue is, it could go on for some time. And I'm willing to sit and listen to whoever's going to speak.
Only concern about that is my brain becomes fried after a couple of hours and we have business that we need to attend to. I would like to see something like maybe have an hour of public comment at the beginning of the meeting. And should there be other people that want to speak, if there's a long list of other people that want to speak, maybe have them speak after we've finished with our business part of the meeting. That's just my opinion.
I think the only don'ts I would that would be if it's something that we're going to vote.
Well, and there again, we could have public comment at the beginning of the meeting on action items only and any other thing a, you know, a public wants to speak about at the end of the meeting. Just throwing some things out there and we can carry on with this discussion later.
I also think, and I don't know if this is a very popular thing to say or not, but I'm going to say it anyway. I think on public comments, that the comments need to be made by Warren County residents. If somebody's coming up here from out of town and they, why are they wanting to speak to us? It's, it's our business, this is our county. So I think it should be restricted to Warren County residents. That's just me. The meeting that got out of hand was attended by a lot of out of, out of county. They didn't all speak, okay? But a couple of them did cause a disturbance and they were not from Warren County. That's my logic here.
And I think that was one of the things that, that Ms. Baller, she, she talked to each of the board members about some of the things that you would like to see to ensure proper decorum within a board meeting. We did, we did put those things together in this and that is one of the things that you've touched on, Mr. Reinhold, is that we did list something in here as far as that they, they must be a resident of Warren County. If they are not a resident, then they would need to contact the board clerk 24 or 12 hours, or was it 24?
24, I think.
I think it's 24 hours before the scheduled meeting that, that they had an interest in speaking. And then the board would make a decision at that meeting on whether you would allow that person to speak or not. So, so we did take that into consideration. Again, the time, the time limits, you know, that, that is up to the board. I mean, you guys, you guys make that decision. I think that what I heard from you guys and what we tried to put, put together for the board was to make sure we have proper decorum in our meetings and that you can run your meetings effectively and, and still receive public input on, on the topics that, that parents or constituents have concerning the school, but also do it in a, in a proper manner so that we can still do the business of the school.
To me, it just needs to be clear that if the room is getting loud, that people are acting out of control, then there's the option to bring people in one at a time to speak or however that needs to be done so we can hear and everyone can get their word in.
Sure. Sure. So we'll continue this discussion when we all, we're all five here?
Yeah. I think, I, I guess, I guess I feel Mr. Reinhold has a point. It's, it's our responsibility to hear from our residents about our school system that want to speak to us. And however long that takes, that's how long it takes. But I think there is the issue with decorum because the point of having public comments is to make those comments to us, not to make them to each other and not to make them to the crowd. And, you know, I think in, deep down, nobody, none of the folks who are speaking really are trying to create a disturbance or to create an uproar and that kind of thing. And I, you know, I, I hope that maybe having happened one time, some of those folks will reassess their actions and that kind of thing. Because, you know, having, having to clear the room did not impress me one way or the other and did not change the way I voted one way or the other. You know, I, I want to hear what these folks have to say. And if, if that can't be done effectively, then as, as Dr. Pence says, we have to find another way to do it. You know, you folks are going to have to go out in the hall and we'll listen to you one at a time because we do want to hear you, but we don't want to hear you yelling at each other. That, that's not giving us any new information. It's not giving us any feel for how you really feel about the issue. It's just you all arguing among yourselves and holding up signs is of no value to me. I mean, it's, it may make them feel good, but it, it's of no value to the discussion that they say they want to have with us.
I think it was in here that signs or banners or flags are permitted in the boardroom so they can leave that out in the hall, you know, outside. That's fine, all you want. Any other comments?
Were there any adjustments that, that you guys would want us to make at this time, at this time to kind of go back and, to, to bring it back to you guys at, at a later time? Are there any things that, that has stuck out on this, this first sample?
Well, I think that three minutes.
Three minutes?
We have, I think on here we have two or three minutes. If we can just keep that at three minutes, which is what we have had in the past.
Two slash three.
And I'm not personally in favor of a 60-minute limit, I don't think, but, I mean, we want to leave that on the form of a discussion if everyone else likes it.
I mean, if you guys want me to, I can put, I can leave it 60 minutes. I can leave it, I can add unlimited. I can, I can put whatever you want me in, that, that, whatever the board wants on this. Because this, this will be a policy change. So once we get this to where the board likes it, then there will be three readings that public can make comment on the policy before the board adopts it. So this will be a total policy change going forward. So whatever you want me to kind of add in or delete from this, then I would need to go ahead and do that so that we can kind of prepare for, for any other conversations that you have or concerns that you have about the policy.
I'm not in favor of the time limit as well. And having said that, I think this is one of those policies that may need to be very fluid. It may need to be brought back for review. You know, there will be a change in this board.
You know, there will be a change in this board on January 1st, and I think it should be at least reviewed very quickly after that because that may be a different thought to the new majority or to the new board.
So should we just table it until after the new board comes on?
I don't think so. I think we need to get the groundwork done and then make an adjustment after we, you know. We might not have a big crowd come in here until some other issue comes up. So anyway, we could test it out on that and make some switches if we have to.
You just don't want to go somewhere and gather dust and then get the plans added by an issue or being.
Are you still frozen up?
And we could have, just because there's a, you know, just if the board wants to put a time limit there for a reason, but the board also has the authority at any point in time to extend that beyond that time limit. So, you know, if you have a 60-minute time limit, you can extend that time to another 60 if that is what the board wants to do during the meeting at that time during public comment to make sure that everybody gets heard, if that's what you wanted to do. Or if you just want to remove it, that is perfectly fine too. I can list that in there, but as the board, when it comes to that meeting, upon recommendation and upon approval, you guys can extend the limit.
Seems like everyone wants that limited.
Sure, I'd like to extend it. I think I would just like to leave it open because future boards might be divided on an issue, and it could be that they cut off discussion, whereas if we leave it open and there's no opportunity for a few board members to stop or some other members of the board want it to continue. So I think I would just leave it open and then manage the meeting, manage it.
Okay, so what I will add is I will do the three minutes is what you're saying as a board, is that you kind of want me to do the three minutes there, and up there I will leave the, I will put unlimited, 60 or upper.
Okay.
Then, and leave that highlighted yellow for another session for you guys to talk about it, discuss it and make the decision on which way you want me to go. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think everybody's for unlimited except for me.
Okay.
So we can discuss it.
I can just remove it and leave it unlimited.
Sure.
And leave it highlighted then as.
Yep.
Okay. I'll just do.
Still open, we'll see when we have the full board here how our group feels.
So are there any other changes or questions that you had? Because I tried taking all of the comments that was delivered and tried to intertwine them within the policy. So I just want to make sure if there is anything else in there that maybe needs to be adjusted or if you're good with the rest of the language of the policy.
I was fine. I was okay with the rest. I was too.
Okay, so three minutes and unlimited on the time. We will not have a practice. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll bring that for, I guess, we'll need to have that discussion again at the next meeting or at the next work session.
Well, we have everyone here at the next meeting? No. And then the following meeting? No.
So maybe the November.
November. Bring it back in November?
Okay.
Okay.
You can use my computer.
That's okay.
Can you use it?
No, I'm fine. Okay. Next item on the agenda, discussion on procedures and guidelines for board members, communication with the school board attorney. And this is something that I also asked to be on the agenda, and since we don't have the full board here, should we just table it until we're all together? Okay. Is that okay with you, Mr. Reinhold? Okay, so we'll just table that. Any further business?
And so with this one, it may not be able to be brought back forth until November either?
Right.
Okay.
We're all here.
Okay.
Maybe in the meantime, just if our legal counsel could maybe put together some frequently asked questions or some, just some information for us to all review.
As far as.
Consultation.
Consultations and, you know, protocols and things like that. You know, it might be, we all need an upgrade of that because, you know, we have done a lot of legal consultation up until recently, and it looks like going forward, we may have more need to reach out.
Okay. And I can get that from our counsel, and I can also have Mr. Ballantyne reach out to VSBA too, because I'm sure they may have, see what they may have also out there. I just then let you guys review that information, and then when we come back at another meeting, then you can discuss this at one point.
Sounds good, thank you. No further business? Meeting adjourned.